Welcome to Board of Selectmen meeting for October 5th, 2023. It is 6:11 PM. And we're getting a late start because we have some problems with our technical issues here and getting Zoom going. Mr. Ihocker is not in our meeting tonight, so it's just me and Mr. Belize for tonight. And as always, Mr. Farrar. And can I please have everybody stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody? Unplug that because it's not going over to the TV anyways. Okay. All right. So first thing on our agenda is acceptance of the state grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in the amount of $75,000 to update the town's master plan and possible vote to authorize the town administrator to sign for the grant on behalf of the town. Okay. So this is another grant we received. Very happy that we were able to get something like this. It helps us put together our master plan for the entire town. We have one in the process for the White's Mill complex and being able to do that. And this one is for the rest of the town. Mr. Farrar, did you have any comments on it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is again, an outstanding grant that we received. I'd like to thank our planning partners at CMRPC as well as all of our state officials, our state reps and state senators for their support, obviously Rural Director Ann Goby as well. This grant will help us retain the services of a licensed professional to do on a master plan for the entire town. The last time a master plan was done was back in 2006, and it needs to be updated and it needs to be done. So this is really a great opportunity from the state to work with, you know, a professional planning outfit to get these services done and to update our master plan that woefully needs to be updated.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions, sir?
Oh, this, I just, this is very good for the town. This is really good.
Very good. Great. So I'll make a motion to accept the state grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in the amount of $75,000 and authorize the town administrator to sign the grant on behalf of the town.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. We accept the grant. Awesome. Thank you. Very good. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is possible vote to appoint Sarah Morin as a full-time secretary for the Building and Planning Department. Mr. Farrar, do you have any comments?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you this evening is a resume for Sarah Morin. She was selected by the interview committee as a candidate for the position of the Building and Planning Secretary that has been currently vacant. She is currently in a neighboring community in a, as an assistant to the assessor's office. However, she has 10 years of experience with dealing as a regional assistant administrator for business operations at a private company. Within that company, she handled notifications to towns, Conservation Commission, handled the notifications to abutters, to other municipalities, for the treatment of bodies of water. She's had some experience with placing legal ads in various newspapers, writing proposals and writing requests for proposals and generating and sending out invoices to clients, reporting to Mass DEP, and obviously maintaining an office. She currently has some level of experience within municipal government, working for a neighboring town. This would be the choice of the interview committee to advance this particular candidate forward to the position.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Do you have any questions, Mr. Belize?
No, sir.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Sarah Morin as a full-time secretary to the Building and Planning Department.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Ms. Morin is appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next thing is review and discuss the recommendation to start Sarah Morin at the step of, step five, grade C3 on the wage compensation scale and discuss weekly hours of operation. Okay. So based on the experience and everything and the past history with municipal experience she has, you've looked at this and it was the recommendation?
Yes. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at what, you know, basing it upon her experience, 10 years as a, as an administrative assistant, you know, coupled with the fact that she currently works for a neighboring municipality in trying to retain and obtain qualified individuals for this particular position, the recommendation would be to start her at a step five on the wage classification scale, which would be $21, $28 an hour. And that is a little bit less than what she's currently making in a neighboring community, but she's looking for a change.
That's $21.28?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions or objections to?
No, I can't, I can't object on the position or the scale. It's just that, in general, I feel our scale is way too low still, but for this position, it is what it is.
Well, it's something we'd have to take up at town meeting next time, see if we could get it adjusted because economy's changing. It's getting hard for everybody and it's harder and harder to get good people.
Yeah, it hurts when he says, that's less than what she's making right now, but she wants to change, so it's not, it's not good.
So she actually taking a pay cut?
Not much of a pay cut, but, you know, a dollar an hour pay cut, yeah.
Okay. And she still wants to do it?
She still wants to do it.
Maybe, where does she live?
East Brookfield.
So it's closer.
Closer. She's kind of in the middle.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, yeah, in the middle, yeah.
No, sir, I'm good.
I'm good with it. So I'll make a motion to start Sarah Morin at the step, at step five on the grade C3 of the compensation. Wow. It's written a little weird. I make a motion to start Sarah Morin at step five on the compensation scale of C3.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And next thing, review and possible vote to approve and sign an updated ESCRO agreement between the town and 360 Building and Remodeling.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into that one, I did want to also talk about the hours for that.
Oh, yep, yep. All right, so we'll go back. So the hours for Ms. Morin, I know we talked about five days a week because that's what we want to go to and that office is really busy, you know, because again, there's a lot of work to be done in that office and there's a lot of people coming here looking to do business and it's very hard for them not to have the full week to be able to do that. And something like this could mean that contractor is not getting their building permit if they're not able to show up here and pick up their permit. So I'd like to see five days a week. Did you have any objections to that?
Well, I just would want to mention, I think that, you know, it's, the applicant, you know, the person that wants to fill this position is not opposed to it. However, you know, looking at the dynamics of it, I'm here on a Friday, Karen's here mostly on Fridays, and so if, if for example, I have the day off or if Karen is, has already met her hours and is not here on a Friday, that could leave, this person could potentially be in the office alone because the rest of the building is closed. Now, I agree that maybe moving to a five-day work week is, is the way of the future and to offer more services to town residents, I think is a good thing. I don't know if we're, we're ready to do that at this stage of the game. That's definitely something that we could plan and have a goal for. You know, this, this position was advertised at 29 hours a week. I think that's woefully low, given the amount of, you know, volume and business that is transaction in that office and that is a money generating office for the town. You know, I think the board may want to consider something, you know, to start between 32 to 35 hours and the 35 hours may be for when there's a, a planning board meeting of some sort. 32 hours could be, you know, the Monday through Thursday schedule, you know, at a, you know, an eight to four type of deal. You know, the board may want to consider that junction to start and to see how we're doing and progressing on that schedule and then make an adjustment later on in the future, you know, at, you know, at an annual town meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I think you're right about having somebody to work by themselves here on a Friday. I think we need to start planning ahead with, you know, if we have more employees, you know, that, at somebody like, get ready, set, go for at least, you know, more than two or three, so they're not going to be alone here. I agree, you know, at...
32 hours?
32 hours, you know.
Or 32 to 35, you know?
Right. And we try as we get other employees, you know, that are coming new or renewing, you know, try to push them in D40 and at some point, you know, like I said, get ready, set, go and...
Have more people around?
More people, so she or he doesn't end up alone here on a Friday.
And I know, Rich, you want to go 40 hours, but I'm okay with that, to start 32 with 35 meetings and stuff, but with the understanding that we're probably going to move towards a 40-hour work week, especially for that department.
Sure.
Because again, there's a lot of work that's going on in that department and to have it completely closed on a day is kind of tough for contractors. You know, we can't just think about what we need here. We got to think about being available for the public too because that office is used quite a bit through the public. So I would say, yeah, eight hours a day, you know, Monday through Thursday and then meetings, but just let her know that possibly in the future, it's going to become a 40-hour position.
She's well aware of that and in the offer letter, it does, on all offer letters that I've made, it all, the hours of operation are always stated, it's based on the operational needs of the town. So if the operational needs of the town change, then the hours change.
Yep. Okay. I'm good with that. Yeah?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now we're into review and possible vote to approve and sign the updated ESCRO agreement between the town and 360 Building and Remodeling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight is a updated draft as I indicated at the last meeting. Town Council had not had a chance, Jeff Blake had not had a chance to review it. He did make some slight modifications defining the term "town" and in its usual place of business and also indicating that the, that in the event the contractor fails to complete the work within 120 days, the ESCRO funds shall be released to the town to be used to complete, for the completion of the work at the Warren Senior Center. So it is also, as indicated at the last meeting, we looked into having the attorney that's holding the ESCRO account sign. It is not customarily necessary to do that, but I said that the town would feel more comfortable about that and the attorney did agree and I just got the, the copy back today from the signed attorney.
With the attorney signature?
With the attorney's signature.
Okay. All right.
It is our, our hope and our goal. The gentleman came in today to sign the actual contract that, that the board had signed a few weeks ago. He signed this agreement. He has got his insurances and he's hoping to start on Tuesday with the project.
Okay. Very good. All right. I'll make a... Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I think I'm good. I was more looking into like, does he need a permit for this, but he's not going to...
Yes, he did, he did, he does need a permit. So he did, he added in a permit today.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
That's what, that's where I was going.
For the siding you need a permit for, not for painting or power washing.
Okay. So yeah, the building inspector is going to...
Right.
He's going to...
In the gutters, right?
In the gutters, right.
He's going to review the, the work.
Yes.
That's like even a plus for us.
Yes.
The fee for the application for the building permit is customarily waived for town work.
Yeah, because it's us.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the updated ESCRO agreement between the town and 360 Building and Remodeling.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You have the copy.
I have the one with the attorney.
We got the one. Okay. Yeah, we got the one with attorney's signature, right? There you go, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. Chief Mallett, you're up. It is time for the Chief of Police Monthly Report for September.
Jeremy Mallett, Chief Police, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
For the month of September, the Warren Police Department logged 2,173 calls of service, investigated 19 felonies, had 81 incident reports for R and B arrests, zero warrants, 23 summons arrests for a total of 27 arrests that month, one protective custody, three juvenile arrests, 130 motor vehicle stops and 35 motor vehicle citations. At the beginning of the month, I attended my Homeland Security meeting on the 6th. I went with Prox Rec and School Admin, Chief Law and Jeremy from the Highway Bureau Logistics for Fire Works, which was canceled due to the weather and will be in June. On the 7th, company came down to calibrate all our radar units and tuning cords for their yearly certifications. On the 8th, Superintendent Duff and I, we greeted all students at Quaybog and Warren Elementary as they come, came to start today. That's something that Superintendent Duff and I are trying to do every Friday, actually. Trying to greet all students at, calling it High Five Friday. On the 12th, Chief Pryor from Ware, Chief Baye from Harwood and Branch, you and I met for our quarterly meeting with Domestic Violence Task Force out of Ware. On the 13th, Town Administrator Jim Farrar and I, we went to the State House and testified in front of a study committee on a bill that would give assistance to rural towns such as us to construct buildings such as the Public Safety Complex. I do want to say thanks to Todd Small and he gave us a tour of the State House, which was really, that was my first time there, so he brought us down to the floor, it was really cool. On the 19th, 20th and 21st, I attended my required yearly chief in service in Norwood. Over these three days, many topics were gone over that satisfy the requirements set forth by the state and MPTC. Also learning training on the 26th, I attended a bloodborne pathogens training that was put on by our insurance, Maya, and that should give us a credit towards our premium.
Yes.
On the 27th, Chief Law and I went to the Seventh Day Adventist Church to speak with the students on fire and internet safety. On the 28th, we attended our monthly school safety committee meeting. And on the 29th, Chief Law and I, we attended a school visitor awareness training put on by our safety chair, Mr. Urban. And finally, this one, this is a, this final thing was a real honor for me. I won't give his last name, there's a young man named Nate. I met him a few years back. He came and interviewed me for a school project. At the beginning of this year, last year, he was diagnosed with, let me get it right, stage four Hodgkin's lymphoma. So it's been burning on the family for him financially wise. Well, he came from me and there's this, there's this organization called Cops for Kids with Cancer. So I sponsored him and actually will be giving him a check from that organization within the next few weeks, which is really cool that they accepted it and they were able to do that for him.
Very good. Thank you.
And that's my report for the month.
Good job. Do you have any questions?
Congratulations, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Farrar?
No. Chief, keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding job.
Thank you.
That's why you're the best chief in the state.
Thank you.
We are a lucky town.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next thing we have are warrants and bills. All right. So I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants payroll. Number 15, in the amount of $56,294.52. And vendor, 18, in the amount of $276,826.19.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills. Make a motion to pay Northeast IT in the amount of $3,364. Amazon Business, in the amount of $483.72. Small Town Administrator of Mass, in the amount of $30. Verizon, the amount of $134.61. Paul Shepperson Electric for $350. Buffoon Cleaning Services, the amount of $1,500. And Beck Plumbing, in the amount of $280.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. And... Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the minutes for September 14th and September 21st with the corrections that Mr. Ihocker has made.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Town Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. At our next meeting on the October 12th, we will be having Superintendent Steve Duff come in at 6:30. He will be giving us some updates from what's happening in the school side. So he'll be stopping in on that date to give us some updates. I have been speaking with him on several different projects that are going on at the school, in particular, our energy management grant that we got for Green Communities. That's going to be hopefully wrapping up, you know, within a week or two at the Warren Elementary School and we'll be moving forward to wrap up that project. I do want to also let the board know, if they haven't already visualized it, but I want to thank Jeremy Olson from our highway and the, and the team out there, all the workers out here today that were out there painting the lines in the parking lot. So the lines have been painted, have been touched up. They may have to come back and handle some of the lines in the back on some of the particulars on the painting in the back of the rear.
These are handicap spots, right?
Handicap spots, yeah.
So I was thinking about that. It doesn't really make sense to have those handicap spots against the building because if you got a wheelchair and you're trying to get out the side where you have a problem and you parked too close to the side of the building, you can't get out. So it doesn't make sense to have them there against the building. They should be on the, you know, where you pull in. You know, if they can correct that, are you good with that?
There's some codes.
Because right now, they're against the building and I don't think they're supposed to be against the building because you're supposed to have space between you.
You know, after he had blown off the ground, I had taken, I had to take a look at the parking lot out back. It would appear that, that the signs are right against the building, but the actual spaces are maybe, you know, five to seven feet away from the building, but they're, they're really faded. They're almost like in, kind of almost in the middle of the, of the, of the area of the road.
And that's, that's where people are driving through them. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with, because they're not pulling up out of the way and they're not increasing efficiency for anybody with disabilities. It's, it's not like it's, it's making it better for them.
Are there any plans to be parking?
Those on that side?
No, right, right near him.
Chief, what are your thoughts on that?
Jeremy would know the rules on if it's proper spot because there is rules to if it's a van, when, how much space is supposed to be there for letting wheelchairs out. Jeremy would have those specs. So that's something that maybe we can ask him.
Yeah, maybe if you could talk with them.
Yeah, I'll check with them.
See if they could put it in the spots. Because it doesn't make sense to be on the side of the building.
Yeah, but...
Unless that's where they have to put them.
Okay. If we can get a plan or an opinion from the building inspector, it's very code related.
Or maybe in a different direction, so the way they are right now, coming in on an angle.
Yeah. Just awkward.
I happened to be down at the highway garage doing a walk-through today. The staff that came up and did the, the lines here today came back, they didn't touch those on purpose because they wanted Jeremy to weigh in on it before they did anything with it. So that conversation's already being had.
Yeah, if you could just...
Yeah, I'll touch them.
Because they'd be right. We don't want to just keep on repeating something because that's what somebody in the past has done. We want them to be proper.
Yeah, it looked odd.
Yeah.
It did look odd.
And we could take those signs off the building and just put them on a post.
The, the, we weren't comfortable doing anything permanent until he had, came down and looked at it. So they, they already did discuss that.
So they, they had concerns about it too.
Yeah. Because also the competency of the building changed to be in a town building instead of being a... instead of being a school. So, the number of tanica parkings needed by the code could have changed. Just run it by Jeremy and, and the building.
Well, I know they have to have them down there because of, that's where the voting is.
Yeah. Yeah, no, makes a lot of sense, but I just don't want the building inspectors come back and go, "Hey, you can't do that."
Right.
So, we're, we're working on that and we'll be finishing up that project. As noted before, the Senior Center Exterior Building Improvement Project will start next week. So, you'll see, the contractor will be there next week. I did let the Senior Center know of that, and minimal disturbance will, will be there. But we're excited to finally get that project rolling and completed. Anticipated start of the new building and planning secretary is gonna be Monday, October twenty-third. Is it anticipated start? The, the new employee will have, is scheduled for a pre-employment physical and drug screen next week, and then, you know, she's in the process of also notifying her current employer on her two weeks. So, she'll be tentatively starting on the twenty-third of October. Today, or actually, this past week, we had received a, an invoice. It was actually addressed to the treasurer's office, to the town, and the treasurer wasn't sure what it was, so it ended up in my mailbox, and I wasn't sure what it was. So, I had asked Karen to look into it, and she went around to several departments and asked, and nobody could come up with a, a, a real explanation as to what this invoice may be for. It's an invoice from a company, FC US Commercial Solutions. It's for nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. So, it came back to me today. We did some further investigations into this invoice. It appears that we've never done business with this company in the past. We've never had a bill from this company. We tried to locate this company in Framingham, Mass. It would appear it's a strip mall with a UPS store attached to it. So, it could be a, a P.O. box of some sort attached to this. We've called the company. It goes to, directly to a voicemail, probably a cellular voicemail. And I had asked the chief, Chief Mallett, to look into this company, to see if there's anything that, you know, that he could come up with. And in the process of doing that, I also went on to our, my listserv for small-town administrators and asked a question about this. And it would appear that several communities have also received the same invoice at, at different prices. So, it is definitely a scam. We sent out a, an email to everybody in town, all boards and commissions, to be on the alert for receiving invoices that are looking to scam and rob the town of its money with fake invoices. So, I also reported this to the Attorney General's Office today, as well as the U.S. Postal Inspector. So, we received this invoice by U.S. mail, and I would just ask all departments to be vigilant and to look at the invoices that you're approving in your committees, and make sure that it's an invoice that's accurate, that it's from a company that you normally typically do business with, before you send it in for processing for payment. Luckily, we were able to catch this, but I would imagine that there's some communities that may not catch this, and will be out the money and trying to track down a, them for the money. So, we have to be vigilant on that, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Good job for catching that. You know, the invoices for nine hundred and something dollars?
Nine eighty-four, eighty-two.
So, we all gotta be aware of these crimes that people try to do. They, they using the mail, they use, you know, phishing methods through emails and, you know, social media and various techniques to try to obtain money from people. If it doesn't sound right to you, it's probably not right. And if you're concerned about it, you could definitely, well, if it's a town employee, definitely should be bringing it to the town administrator's attention. Don't pay it. You know, we should be looking into it because once that money's paid out, trying to get it back is probably not gonna happen. You're at a loss. And unfortunately, people do fall for these crimes, and it's a multi-billion dollar industry. And it happens quite a bit. So, good catch, and not today.
Not today.
So, good job.
Thank you. I do also want to report to the board that our RFP for the Rights Mills Master Plan went out today and is due back by October thirty-first at 1:00 P.M. Our IFB invitation for bid for sludge hauling again, we had sent it out, you know, last month. We didn't get any responses, so we're sending it out again. That was sent out again on this past Monday. That's due back October twenty-fourth at 1:00 P.M. And then tomorrow, I will be having a meeting with our team that is doing School Street and Prospect Street right on, onsite at 9:00 E.M. on School and Prospect Street to go over the current project, make sure everything's up to par. I have received some calls from some neighbors, and we're gonna be addressing those moving forward.
Okay. And we just received a report from them testing the water, and there's no bacteria detected in the water.
Yep.
So, they have been testing the water to make sure that the water is safe, and there has been no bacteria detected. So, good news on that one. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so new business. Anybody get new business?
Nope.
No? Okay, old business. New business.
Calor?
Yeah. You get an update?
So, the update is, Calor is trying to come back very strong, but they're very cautious, trying to do their due diligence, you know, trying to get all the information as possible. They, they wanna just stay in communication with the board, so we know what they are doing and everything. They're working on it. They only have one question that I, that he, one of the components that they're gonna need is to see the update of the levy maintenance and all that, but I think that's, you know, that's work in progress. So, I told him that he, once he needs that information, he'd come to us and talk to you or Richard or the board about the, how's that going on? Because he stated that all the help that he's gonna get from the state, you know, all these little things have to be checked, boxes. So, he's, he's, he's on it, he's work, he's, he's, he's trying to work very hard, and he will keep us updated.
Okay. And you can let him know that we're about to have another levy inspection, that is...
Twenty-sixth, I believe.
The twenty-sixth of October. So, we're gonna have another levy inspection. And that will be with the Corps of Engineers coming out. So, yeah.
Yeah, I told him that we've been working on it to be in compliance.
Yeah.
And, you know...
Some, some of it's a lot more involved with the levy that we have to deal with, and we gotta develop policies and agreements to, to do certain things, like cleaning the pipes out and, you know, and exercising the valves and things like that. And we need to have, we need to have an agreement with the owners to do that, because it's on their property. And we gotta look into an easement, because I, we still haven't identified if we have an easement on that property for the levy. Because we gotta look at that. And then we gotta make sure, did we ever get the, we ever notify the...
The, the current owner about the damage?
Well, no, they, yeah.
Yes, yes. So, I'm, I'm drafting that letter right now. I mentioned it to Jim, and him and I were going to sit down and, you know, he was gonna show me a little bit more on the damage side, so I can understand a little bit more.
Because I would like them to get that repaired before we do this inspection. Because again, we gotta show we're doing stuff. We, we're doing stuff with sandbags and, you know, other things, and maybe updates to equipment. You know, what we have, we have the trailer, but we also need to fix some of the physical things at that levy. Because the last thing we want to do is fall out of compliance, because if something happens with that levy, we can't afford that.
Yeah.
Not on our budget.
That letter will go out next week. Maybe we can meet tomorrow in office.
There, there is a dirt line. That, that dirt line needs to be, that pavement needs to be removed, and that dirt needs to be replaced against that wall, where it was, and bringing it back out to where that limit was. And I understand they removed it so they could swing their trucks in, because they took those wide turns and it was easier to get their trucks in, but it's part of the levy. They can't remove it. Nobody gave them permission to do it, so...
Good. Thank you.
Any other old business?
Nope.
Um... Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything. Um, correspondence. We have a email from Mr. Jeff Tripp, and that was about a sidewalk at three ninety, well, three, well, seven ninety-three Main Street. And it's about foliage from some of the bushes that are out in the sidewalk. And this was forwarded to the Highway Department, correct?
Yes.
To see if we can get that. We can't allow these gardens to grow out into the sidewalks. This is where people are walking, and especially during the winter, the sidewalks are supposed to be cleaned and clear, and having these bushes and trees growing out into the sidewalks kinda defeats the purpose of having a safe, accessible pathway. So, the Highway Department is looking into that one, and hopefully we can get that cleaned up out of the way. Okay. Comments and concerns? Anybody have any comments and concerns?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferrer?
No.
Anybody from the public? Mr. Conrad?
Mr. Conrad, Port Hills. I'd like to commend our fire chief and his resourceful people for their, the event that happened on South Padre Road today.
Police chief.
You were there, too.
Oh, no, I'm saying he, they were, they were a hundred percent right there with us. But thank you. Yeah.
I'll let him explain.
So, we, we did have a, a situation in South Padre Road with a five-year-old child that was reported missing to us. We took that very seriously. The child had been missing for a little bit of time before we were involved in that situation. There was some really rough terrain in the area, as well as a, an area with water involved, that we were concerned the child may have gotten into the water. We called local resources, mutual aid to, to assist us with the, with the search of the child, the state police, the environmental police, as well as local state and fire, police and fire also showed up from the surrounding towns. We worked together extensively, and fortunately, we had the best outcome we could. The child was located decent away behind the residence in a, in a very rough wooded area, but was pretty much unhurt, a couple scrapes and bruises, but again, it was a best-case scenario that we could, that we could hope for. So, you know, child's home safe with, with parents, and I can't thank enough the resources, everything from regional dispatch to dispatch those resources to Warren Police Department, to the local fire and, and other police departments that came, the state police. You know, everybody worked together seamlessly, you know, and kinda came from all directions, you know, and we didn't even expect the response we got from the state police. There was more injuries than we could count. So, you know, so everybody, you know, obviously very concerning when you have a, a child of any age, especially one of that age. So, my hat's off to them for, for everything they did for us, and, you know, the little guy recovers well, and is, and is, you know, so glad he's reunited with his family.
Very good job, gentlemen. You both did an amazing job. And we've seen, just recently, the nine-year-old girl, these things can go really bad. And it's great to see that we had a, a very good outcome on this one, and things happen. Keep your eyes on these little ones, they get out quick, and you guys did a great job in doing that. Thank you very much. Chief, did you have anything to say?
Well, I think Adam said, I think the response was amazing. Obviously, we're knee-deep in it, and just the surrounding towns that we didn't even call that came, was just listening to us on the radio, came on, helped. We had Sturbridge Northwest, Rayburg Field, I think Oxford Ambulance was there.
Yeah, we had a specialized team from District Seven that was capable of search and rescue, as well as, you know, search, water search and dive capabilities as well. Had some caution, drone units. So, you know, every effort was put in to, to find the child as quickly as possible to make sure they, we'd be safely returned.
Thank everybody for everything and all their effort they did. And as we know, when that call comes out for a kid, everybody is coming. So, good job, good outcome.
Thank you.
You got anything? Mr. Ferrer?
Thank you both for all the hard work, dedication that you guys both do, and to all of our counterparts and neighboring communities. Thank you for your support for our town. It's very important. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments, concerns?
Just sticking ahead with Jim McKinnon.
Thank you, sir.
Berks manager. Thinking ahead to Halloween, trick-or-treat time. Every year, this seems to happen that, as we put out five to six-thirty townwide, but the people in the outskirts of town, you know, buy candy, think that kids are coming townwide, but they usually end up in the West Warren area, heavy that area. I was thinking this year to come up with some kind of map, to put out in public, to try to get the best baby center of, to let people know that's the best area. If they wanted to, if they live far out, they could come down to Saint Dean Park and, you know, hand out candy there.
Yeah, it'd be nice to, it would've been nice to develop something like online, like a registry, house registry, where houses could've sat there and could've had a map of the streets, and houses can go on there and say, "We're giving candy at our address", and opt it in. I don't know if that's something we could do, like in the future. You have a computer, Guro.
They do it for the yard sale, don't they?
Yeah, but they do a map, and they, they take donations in for doing that, like, whether they sell the maps.
Yeah.
This would be nice to have, if we have something that's online, and just like a Google Map of the town. And of course, because there are a lot of rural town, rural homes, you know, you're not gonna get many trick-or-treaters in somebody's further-out homes.
And that's what, say if someone knew, moved that neighborhood and thought, "Oh, you know, kids have bought a bunch of candy and no one ever showed up." You know, it's at least letting the people know that most of the action is in that area.
It would be nice if we could probably set up something like a trunk-or-treat for the town, versus just a school, but actually just doing like the whole town. This is, this is where we're gonna do it, and, because some of these locations are pretty far, and to walk 'em, I know, walking my kids around, after a while, I'm getting old. You know, you start getting tired.
Well, that's where the area from, as from where I rode spring... Well, it's already area from, uh, from Wero Spring Street to about Highland Pleasant, Main Street, Chapel, Dean Street, Central Street, that area.
So you're volunteering?
At least. If you can get some help with, um, making of a map or something.
Mary?
Yes, sir.
I figure you have a great idea. I think we have to think that we have two different users. The ones, the ones, the ones we have kids and we are looking for where to go so our kids are safe, asking for candies. And the people who buy the candies and wait there and nobody shows up. So I think the, your map will be really good for the first group because we're telling, you know, police is going to be around. We're going to all be here. These are the streets that are going to be more, you know, emphasized on the trick-or-treat. You're more than welcome to come. Now with the second group, maybe we have to come up with something like what happens after at Station B, where, you know, if you have your candies, you can come and donate it to the, uh, you know, uh, when they do the, uh, the prices for the customs or something like that, you know? I, I will be very happy to help you with the map. Um, I can actually do what you want about register, registration about the houses online and have an online map too. But let's see how far we can go. And, you know, it, it wouldn't hurt if we planned for the future, but at least we can start with a map and telling everybody, look, if you don't know where to go in Warren, we're going to be here. A lot of people come, you're more than welcome. You can park here, you can park, we can show where people can park and join us at the end on the parade.
Yeah. It's hard. It's like where I live, I, I've never gotten a trick-or-treater where I live, ever. Well, my next door neighbor that lives next to me, when their kids are smaller, they came over a couple of times, but that was about it. Um, but it's never going to happen for me.
And this isn't discouraging anyone from, that people that do, do it out, way in the outskirts, that's fine, they can do whatever they want.
Yeah, because there's a lot on this side of the town too. You know, like, in my case, you know where I live, we put candies, but nobody goes there, even, it's just around the corner. Then with my kids, we go, we walk down the road, then I, we go in the car, we go to West Warren and we join over there. So trying to get a little bit of both sides, but, you know. We could do like a pilot project and see how, how it works, you know?
So what you get in Warren area too, just to.
Yeah.
Well, last year, David came to my house.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I was going to say, you know something? I like to be able to go to Joe's house and see him in his dress. And it was impressive. He pulled it off.
So maybe we can do, try to experiment if people are going to say, hey, look, if you're going to have candies for the kids, register in our map and then I'll have just that map showing. So people know we can go, you know, and, and get candy for the kids even if they want to do it here in Warren or West Warren. And then we show in West Warren the schedule of the parade and this, and we invite, invite them to go there. So we'll talk, we'll talk to do that map and how we can do the registration and all that. I think it'll be a, a fun, a fun project.
Yeah, help out residents a lot too. I seen a lot of activity on Facebook about it too.
That's what seems to happen after the Halloween, everyone comes out and says they have extra.
We should have done this.
Yeah, it should, oh, there should be a map, you know?
Yeah.
Seen a couple of people last year that said that, so.
Yeah, so let's.
A couple of people have been asking, is there a map? Is there some place we can sign up or register that?
The fire does, there's Santa Route now, you have a designated route you go and so.
Try very hard, yes.
Yeah, but you have it planned out.
Yeah, please everyone all the time, but we try very hard to get as many places as we possibly get. Yeah.
So it's good.
Pretty similar, you know, having any area map, a safe area, people should feel safe in.
Absolutely. Good idea. Anything else, sir?
Uh, one other thing, the, uh, picnic tables, new picnic tables have arrived.
Okay.
Of all of them. They've been coming in for the last two weeks, a little out of time. They're all black metal.
Very good.
Eight foot. There's three of them on the common, two of them at Carter, four at Dean, one in, uh, McWhiter Park in West Warren. So we kind of scatter them around. Uh, I do see people already enjoying them on these nice days. If it doesn't rain every other day. So, they, they should last several years, many years.
Those ones last a long time.
Yeah, they can.
Good quality. No rotting on those.
No.
All right. Um, did the trash bins come in?
Yes, all, all, all of the, five of those.
The inserts?
Yep. Everything's been, and they've been, we've been checking them weekly and they're used to.
All right, very good. And the light's still on at the gazebo?
Yes, uh, that's still pointed there. Uh, every once in a while I still do get, uh, trash around, kind of picking it up. Just one of those things you got to keep after.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's after, it's actually townwide, you see little.
Yeah, you're seeing the little nip bottles everywhere and.
Yes.
It's actually getting quite disgusting and we have an abundance of, um, liquor stores in town and, you know, I understand people like to have their drink, but there's no excuse for dropping those little bottles all over the ground through our community. Cause this is where our kids ride our bike, their bikes and everything else. And, you know, we want to present our town as being the friendly inviting town that we are and clean and respectable to each other and.
The other thing, I, I person deal with the highway department, we've been trying to keep islands and stuff between intersections, mowed better and cleaned up. And, you know, we're getting a lot of trash on those islands and stuff.
Unfortunately, certain people are just, there's, there's special words for them, but can't be saying it on TV. You know, let's treat our community with respect. You know, highway department does a really good job keeping it clean and trying their best to, to give us a nice community. And everybody else needs to do their part too. If you see some trash, pick it up, throw it away. There's trash barrels right there in the common. No need throwing it anywhere else when you get trash barrels all over the place. So. Well, thank you. Anything else, sir?
Uh, that's it for now.
Hmm. Anybody else have any comments and concerns? Anybody on Zoom have any comments and concerns? All right. Um, next meeting is October 12th at 5:30 for a dog hearing. Um, that's going to be for a nuisance slash dangerous dog hearing, um, for that day. And then our regular meeting will be at 6:30, um, P M. Uh, pending, they, there might be a little more time involved in the dog hearing. Um, but we're hoping to start at 6:30 for the regular selective meeting on October 12th. Okay? Can I, have a motion? No? A motion, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.